I'd like to call the regularly scheduled March Board of Trustees meeting to order and ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, wherever it is, for the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's just right there, okay? That's right. It's just right there. All right.
I didn't see it. You could have my mind.
If we turn right to it, it...
It's the spirit and intent of it, the kennels, right? Okay. All right. Thank you all for being here. I'll ask Peggy if she would please call the roll.
Trustee Ash.
Here.
Trustee Brydenfall.
Here.
Trustee Daniels.
Here.
Trustee Flunder. Trustee Maddox. Trustee Rios.
Here.
Trustee Townsend.
Here.
All right. Thank you, Peggy. We'll ask for a motion to accept the agenda. Go move.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Now look for a motion for approval of the minutes of the February 18th, 2014 Board of Trustees meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Agenda item number five, Audience to Patrons and Petitioners. Do we have anyone present here this afternoon that would wish to address the Board of Trustees? If so, please step to the podium. Over to my left, your right, Karen. Good afternoon, and although we know, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Karen Hernandez, 7910 Longwood, Kansas City, Kansas, 66109. Greetings, everyone.
Greetings.
Madam President and the Board, I'd like to invite you all to the Wyandotte County Ethnic Festival. I come here every year and do this. I have flyers for you. I want to remind you that this year it's going to be on Saturday, April 12th, in the Fieldhouse as normal, and it will be from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And I have flyers here for you if you don't already have them. I'm not aware if you do or not. Do you have these?
No.
Okay.
I have seen one, but I would certainly take another.
Just wanted to invite the Board, the President, and all the community that's here today, the beloved community. Thank you so much.
All right, Karen. Thank you very much for your commitment, passion to it, and consistent support.
Thanks, Karen.
And the college appreciates the opportunity to be partners in that. Were there any other patrons? Thank you. And we'll move to agenda item number six, which is slated as an executive session, so I'll entertain a motion.
How many? What's time?
Twenty minutes, Mr. Chairman.
I'll move over to executive session, twenty minutes to discuss non-elected personnel matters, protect privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed.
Second.
All right. We have a second. Trustee Townsend. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We will adjourn to executive session, and we'll see you all in 20 minutes. All right. We are back in regular session. Thank you for your patience, and we are ready for agenda item number seven, Communication.
We have one piece of communication. Peggy? Can I take that with me? Oh, this one right here. Where's the piece of paper that was with it? Okay. No communication.
We have no communications. All right. Then, Agenda item eight, the President's Report.
We have, when, Mr. Chair, when we attended the conservation, when we received the award for conservation for the work that we did at the Dr. Berg Technical Ed Center, we wanted to bring that and show it and present it to the board chair.
Nope.
So that you can read it.
Very good. This is the Bob Daley Urban Conservation Award 2014, presented to Kansas City, Kansas Community College. For excellence in conservation practices demonstrated in the planning, design, construction, and operation of the Dr. Thomas R. Berg Technical Education Center, given by Wyandotte County Conservation District Board of Supervisors dated February 6, 2014. So trustees, I'm sure you all had an opportunity to see it, and we'll display it for our viewing audience as well.
One of the things, this award was given in 1999, 2000, 2001, 2, 3, and 2006. And one of the reasons that it's become much more difficult for this award, for them to grant this award, is many of the conservation measures are now law, and so, or code, or something like that. And so, for them to select the college for going above what the code was and above what the law was to get there, I think was a real pat on the back for the college. This award, last time it was given, 2006.
Wow.
And we will hang it in the tech center.
Congratulations, everyone. Brian, we know, I mean, I know you don't like to take the credit, but you're sure, you know, your role in that whole process, building process, from planning and design and construction and so forth, was really great, along with many people in the audience here today. And so, congratulations on receiving the award.
Thank you. It's good.
All right.
Last week, both Brian and I were in Topeka because there's a lot going on, and I will be there for the next two days. The Presidents will be meeting with legislatures in the area of education. There are many laws that are being considered, and we need to have a voice in all of that. So for the next two days, I'll be there, and we may have something to report by the next board meeting. The second President's Newsletter went out, and hopefully, all of you read it.
This is where you know it yet.
So that was the second one. I promised to send it out on the last day of the month, so we have two more, one in April and one in May, and then hiatus over the summer. There's a vocal cabaret on Thursday night, beginning at 6:00, and there's going to be barbecue. The tickets are $10, and it will be to your advantage to attend that. There's been a lot of planning already that's gone into that, so the vocals will start about 8:15 or so. And there'll be plenty of time to eat and communicate and have a good time. You can pay at the door, or you can get your seat early. And you can see John Stafford, or you can go downstairs to the music department, and you can talk to the dean. You know, you can come to my office if all else fails, and we'll make sure that you get We have Andrika would like to come forward and talk about what's going on with the Problem Gambling Awareness Month. And I have a proclamation here that was signed by me. Did you want me to read that, or just mention that I have it? You want me to read it? Okay. I'll start with that. Is that okay? Whereas, on behalf of the President, employees, staff, faculty, and students at Kansas City, Kansas Community College, we are pleased to join the Northeast Kansas Problem Gambling Task Force in promoting March 2014 as Problem Gambling Awareness Month at Kansas City, Kansas Community College. And whereas, the Northeast Kansas Problem Gambling Task Force mission is to raise awareness of and provide education to individuals, families, and communities to reduce the harmful effects of problem gambling. Whereas, promoting the Awareness Month provides individuals in the problem gambling community an opportunity to educate the public and policymakers about the social and financial effectiveness of services available for problem gambling. And whereas, problem gambling is a public health issue affecting tens of thousands of Kansans of all ages, races, and ethnic backgrounds in all communities, and which has a significant societal and economic cost. And whereas, problem gambling is treatable, and treatment is effective in minimizing the harm to both individuals and society as a whole. And whereas, numerous individuals, professionals, and organizations have dedicated their efforts to the education of the public about problem gambling and the availability and effectiveness of treatment. And whereas, the Northeast Kansas Problem Gambling Task Force invite the President, employees, staff, faculty, and students at Kansas City, Kansas Community College to participate in Problem Gambling Awareness Month. Now therefore, I, Dr. Doris Givens, President of Kansas City, Kansas Community College, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2014 as Problem Gambling Awareness Month at Kansas City, Kansas Community College, and encourage all employees, staff, faculty, and students at Kansas City, Kansas Community College to help spread the message that there is help for problem gamblers through treatment, and to support those who are in treatment and recovery, and their families. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause this seal to be affixed. Doris Givens, President.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for allowing us to come and speak to the Board. I want to introduce you to some really great people. We've got some students here with our addiction counseling program. We have Charles Liston. Okay? George Mayfield. Okay? And Chuck Miller. And then we have Hillary Dunaway, who is with the Kansas Department of Aging and Disability. She is our gambling specialist in our region. And of course, Dr. Hall, one of our professors here on campus. And then Peter Guzman, who is one of our treatment counselors here in our area, so...
Thank you all for being here.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Charles Liston, and I'm a member of the Northeast Kansas Problem Gambling Task Force, and a student here at KC, KC, KCC Addiction Counseling Student. We want to, we want to thank you for signing this proclamation for us this month and recognizing March as Problem Gambling Awareness Month. And we brought some more information for the Board about problem gambling. And we're always looking for dedicated task force members, so, and that information is what we're passing out. Thank you.
Recruiting, too. Excellent. All right.
And one of the things that we really want to just kind of highlight in some of the things that our task force is doing, we are very active with our students here on campus. We are going to be having a booth here on campus to be able to help our staff, students to understand what problem gambling is. The task force isn't for or against gambling. We just want our community members to be responsible. So we want that, we want our community members to know that Kansas has a no-cost treatment plan for the problem gambler, for family members, or concerned others. And so, we want to get that information out because we think, you know, a lot of people just don't know about that. Yes, J.D., those, isn't that awesome? Isn't that cool? That's cool. The pens light up. Sorry. He was like, whoa. But one of the things that we're really excited about, we are going to be one of the model task forces in the United States because we are hosting what we call a Project Change. And Project Change is we're going to our local lottery retailers and asking them not to sell lottery tickets to minors. And I'm not sure if you all are aware of this, but it is illegal for a retailer to sell lottery tickets to a minor under 18, okay? However, there is a loop in there with Kansas Lottery. It is perfectly legal, and I say this cautiously, perfectly legal for a minor to purchase a lottery ticket. There are no consequences for that minor, okay? If a minor was to purchase alcohol, there's a consequence. If a minor is to purchase tobacco, there's a consequence. But unfortunately, we do not have a law that gives consequence to our minors. So we are educating our lottery retailers. We are going to be sending minors in to these convenience stores and seeing if our retailers are abiding by the law. We're going, we're partnering with law enforcement, local law enforcement, to help us with the Phase III, to be able to make sure that we are, that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. Now let me just give this real quick data. This has not been done in the United States at all, okay? And so, why is their gambling addiction? It's because they're starting young, okay? And no one's catching them, no one's helping them. They're able to do it. They get that big win at 13 years old, and they're going to keep on getting that big win. Now, this is the interesting fact, is that, let's see, I just kind of lost my train of thought. Anyway, I don't know where I was going with that. But we're a model, we're a model task force, and we're going to be able to provide data to our entire state with this. So, oh, I know where I was going to go. We went to one retailer here in our local area, and we gave them an educational packet. And this is what the clerk said to one of our task force members, and said, "I am moving out of Wyandotte County. I am not going to have my business in Wyandotte County." And the lady was like, "Well, why would you say that?" And he said, "Because you care too much about your people." Isn't that a good, I mean, that's a cool comment. And the lady was like, "Well, we're just asking you not to sell to minors." And he was like, "Well, you're taking away my business. You care way too much about your people." If there's a comment to be said, that would be the greatest, you know, complaint or whatever someone could say. So anyway, our task force is busy, and we would love for the community members, anyone interested in joining the task force, please come see me here on campus, or Dr. Hall, or just email us on that. We're on the website. Just let us know. We will welcome you to the task force. Does anyone have any questions?
I have one. This kind of reminds me of something that some organizations I was involved with several years ago did about smoking and selling cigarettes to minors. And they would go around and kind of interview and talk to businesses. And those that, you know, made the commitment to abide by that, they kind of got this sticker in the window that, you know, indicated that they were involved in this and were going to be very mindful of selling to minors. Have you thought about that at all?
Yes, we have. There's a program actually called Reward or Remind. It's actually my patenting group, and we can't actually call it Reward or Remind. But what we do is we will go in with the educational packets over with a minor, and if the retailer sells to that minor, then we're going to give them like a remind card, you know, consequence. This is what happens if you sell. By the way, it's a felony if a retailer sells to a minor, okay? A dollar, a dollar ticket becomes a felony. Isn't that just crazy? Okay. So they're going to get that consequence card. If they don't sell, then we're going to give them a thank you card. Thank you for being such a great retailer. You're doing awesome. And we're going to promote them through media, whatever it is, to say thank you. We're also giving them large signs to put on in their store to say, "If you're under 18, you cannot purchase a lottery ticket." So yes, we're making sure that our retailers are educated. We don't want to trap them. We don't want to make this, you know, our community, you know, make it worse. We want to make sure we're helping them, and education is the way to go. So, thank you. Anybody else?
Well, wonderful. Thank you, Andrika, and thank you to everyone in the task force for your passion and commitment to this, and our community is better because of it. I don't care what that lady said. And thank you very much. Thanks for keeping us informed. Excellent.
Jim Beechwood is here to give an update. Last time he was here, there were questions from the Board about press releases and other matters, and he's here today to give the Board an update.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, and appreciate the time today. As Dr. Givens said, I wanted to provide you a brief update, a little bit of an update on what I'm calling some touch points in the community for the college. And what I consider touch points are PR opportunities, whether that come in the form of a press release, an event we're sponsoring, or a news article that's been released about the college. The first one I wanted to share with you, and that's at the top of your packet there, dovetails nicely with the award for the TEC, I think. This is a report that was put out by the Lawrence Journal World, and they refer to it as their Wyandotte County Progress Report. They put it out once a year, and what they do is they highlight significant growth and impact in the community. And this year, they highlighted the college. And I wanted to give special thanks to Mr. Bodie for participating in the interview for that article. As you'll see, and I tried to highlight some of the key points in there. It talks about the impact that that's having in the community, both short-term and long-term, certainly. The Unified Government Director of Economic Development is quoted in there as talking about the importance about the facility, and also the training that it's going to provide going forward with workforce development. So it's a really nice piece, and I encourage you when you get a chance to read that. And that just came out at the end of February. Also, the next piece in there I wanted to share with you is from Ingram's Magazine. And what that is, is they're, once a year, they put out an annual list book, basically highlighting the top organizations, colleges, hospitals, and so forth, in the Kansas and Missouri side. And the college ranks eighth in terms of enrollment, both in terms of community colleges in Kansas and Missouri. So that's nice to get that pub, and also, we put an ad in there. That's what you'll see, the color ad, you'll see attached to that. That was part of that listing as well. And that magazine goes to leaders in the business community, so that's important because it gets to their workforce, to their staff, and it makes them aware that we are a resource for that. Also, wanted to talk a little bit about press releases. J.D., you had asked at the last meeting about providing the titles, and that's what I put in front of you today. Between the press releases that are sent out by my department and also athletics, there were over 50 articles that went out this past month, highlighting everything from athletic events to news stories to achievements to awards, the majority of which are published, which is encouraging. And that number's not unusual. That's pretty much on average. We can go higher at times, but that's a good, solid number for us. And again, those are routinely published in the Wyandotte Daily News and some of the other local publications. Also, wanted to talk about what we're going to have coming up is, through the radio, a community affairs program. And what that consists of, it's a 30-minute-long interview program where some of the radio stations we do work with will sit down with several of faculty and so forth, and we control the interview. We literally can submit the questions, and that gives us an opportunity to tell our story. And it's broadcast on four stations in the metro area, and it plays on Sundays. We don't have the date set, and I'll get that to you, but the opportunity is there to sit down and, again, get our story out through an interview process with some of the programs we have going on. We talked last month about the RFQ for the advertising agency. That did go out at the end of February, and it went out to a number of agencies, and we also posted that on our website, and also publicized that in some of the local papers. And in terms of timing, we're looking at this month to accept the replies, and then in April, we're going to review those and then make kind of a first cut. And that first cut will then come in through the open forum concept, I think I talked a little bit about at the last meeting. And what that's going to consist of is where we're going to have anybody, faculty, student, that wants to attend, and they literally will hear the agency essentially give their pitch. And so, we do want the involvement of the community to have a say in who's ultimately selected. That, again, will take place probably toward the end of April. Then in May, we'll make a selection from those folks that had come in, and then we're looking June roughly at a start date. Again, a tentative timeline, but that's kind of how we're sketching things out, month by month, going forward. And then lastly, as part of your packet, Alan Hoskins had asked me to include the newsletters for the two baseball programs that you'll see here, so... Questions?
I'd like the two newsletters on softball and baseball. How are those distributed? How do you think those go to? Besides our website, I assume?
I was handed these on the way there. I don't know how those are just...
At the game, sort of, kinda like a game program? Okay, thanks.
And I, because the Advancement Council, they, these are things that they're really interested in. I was trying to think of the best, they're now only meeting every other month, but it'd be great to have some of these pieces there for them to see and be updated on, and they meet, they'll be meeting the first Monday in April.
Okay.
So, however, I mean, we can talk about how best to, to provide that information for them, but I know they'd be very interested and impressed with this, so.
Absolutely. Be glad to help with that. Okay.
And all these articles, everything, they're on the website, right?
They're on the website, and they're also sent out to yourselves and also all employees and staff. And then there's a, a media list that receives those as well, the local papers, several. I mean, I think it's a dozen or so that receive these, and then they make the election whether they will publish it or not. But again, they routinely, and this is large thanks to Alan over the years, through the relationships he's developed, they routinely will publish our stories, so.
Thank you.
Excellent report, Jim. Thank you very much.
Appreciate the update.
Very complete.
On April 3rd, we'll have the Second Annual College Arts Day here at Kansas City, Kansas Community College, and it's co-sponsored by USD 500 and Prep KC. It's April the 3rd. This is your chance to talk with our experienced instructors, I think that's the students that come, right?
Yes, there was a submission in that semester which was sent to...
Yes.
This is the welcome version, and there's about four foot one at the head of the humanities here.
Okay. So, it's for students, they get a chance to ask questions, experience the college classroom, and discover career opportunities doing the things you love the most. So, that's, I would assume that might even be a recruiting effort or opportunity.
I would hate to be accused of ulterior motives.
Okay.
I certainly hope so.
We will have a leadership team meeting on Friday, and we will have about 52, 53, 56 leaders at the college who will get together and talk about leadership and have some presentations on college safety and, and other issues of great interest. And we'll do that on Friday for about six or eight hours. And Donuts with Dunn and Doris will be Tuesday, March 25th. So, if you receive a call asking you to come, if you want fruit, we'll do that too. But, you know, donuts once a month won't hurt, you know? May not help, but it won't hurt. So, if you receive the call, please accept that. And the vocal cabaret is gonna be in the pack, I think I said that before, but it's in the pack on Thursday evening at 6:00. So, if you get a chance, please join us and support our students. And that completes my report. Thank you very much.
Dr. Gibbons?
Oh, yes, we have, I have one more. How could I forget? Mrs. Bryden Thaw, and she's asked me to be the emcee even, and I forgot. So, Mrs. Bryden Thaw.
Well, I, I know I spoke about this at the previous meeting, but we finalized our plans for an education forum specifically for Wyandotte County, and it's going to be March 27th at the Technical Education Center. And our panelists are going to be Dr. Cynthia Lane, USD 500, and we will also have somebody from Turner, the, who's the Assistant Superintendent, Joy Ingle, will be representing Turner, and Dr. Ed Marquez from Donnelly. Will be giving a legislative update. As you all know, there's a lot going on at the state, and we wanna make sure our constituents are well-informed and ready to be advocates for their institutions and for education in Wyandotte County. So, Dr. Gibbons will be moderating that panel. We'd love to get that word out broadly, and, you know, we anticipate a, a good turnout and a very diverse turnout. That's really important. Our partners in this are El Centro, our Advancement Council, the mainstream coalition, and obviously it'll be a great opportunity to highlight the Technical Education Center as well as the college.
What was the time again, Kathy?
We'll, we'll be doing registration at 6:30 with the panel starting at 7:00.
AM?
PM. Well, if I'm involved, you know, it's not a...
No AM.
That completes my report.
All right, that completes Dr. Gibbons' report. Any further questions for her? Okay, I'll entertain a motion then. I have a motion to accept Dr. Gibbons' report in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, and thank you all to everyone that presented specially. Thank you very much. Okay, Agenda Item 9, Vice President for Academic Affairs, Dr. Vitale.
Thank you, Chairman Ash. I have several things that the board needs to act on this evening. Well, I'd like to skip down into the middle and take first the proposals for research and developmental sabbaticals. The faculty have been here since about 3:30 waiting to, for those proposals. I'd like to go ahead and have them do their proposals. I'm not sure what the format is, if you just ask them questions...
They're too good for us to have them leave, so we'll, we'll keep it short.
Do you have any questions for either Mr. Whitehead or Ms. Olson?
I move approval of, do we wanna do them separately?
Where are they? Are they here?
They're here. Would you guys stand, please, so that they know who you are? Mr. Brian Whitehead and Ms. Awilda Olson.
I think we have to do them separately. I move approval of Brian Whitehead's request for a sabbatical as recommended by the dean and the vice president.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
I did have one question about the new magazine, the Pitchfork. Is that, can you tell us a little more about that, or is it out, or is it gonna come out, or student, student work?
By the end of the semester, we've hit the stands of the first issue, so I wanna say about a third of the way done, and it's looking good.
Student, student work?
Yes, exclusively student work.
Excellent.
Our masthead earlier this afternoon, it's updating.
Great. We'll look forward to copies of that.
Yes, that's, you know, that's a condition, you, we usually have, we come back and give us rundown how your sabbatical went.
You have to show your work.
In pro, yeah.
Is that gonna be a yearly, weekly, monthly? How do you, what you...
Minimum of once a semester, hopefully two, twice a semester, once we get up and running.
Open to any student or humanities students?
Student activity open to anybody, any student.
Did you request to start in 15, in 2015?
Yes.
Okay. You, you know, I, I knew nothing about digital storytelling, so I did a little research on it, and that's pretty fascinating stuff, and, and I'm excited about your research and what you're gonna come up with. I think it's gonna be a, a really good addition to the, to the curriculum here, and I actually wish you were starting sooner.
Well, but I'm already begun with preliminary research, so I'm at, at least as excited about it as you are about your stuff. It's definitely fascinating, it's gonna be a great opportunity for us.
Excellent.
Thanks to both, thanks to both of you for doing it. It's like wonderful, extra work, but appreciate your efforts. Thanks.
Call for a question?
We need to approve her.
Okay.
Yeah, we need to move that one.
Yeah, so, a motion on the other one.
To move.
All right, we have a motion in a second to accept the sabbatical from Ms. Olson as recommended by the dean and the vice president. Are there questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Great project.
Ms. Wilson as well?
Yes.
Olson, we're excited about that.
And I appreciated the form in which you, you made it very concise, your, your bullets of what you were going to be learning and so forth, so that makes it easier for us to follow and read, do our homework before we come to board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, believe it.
Excellent. All right, we look forward to seeing your work.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Moving back to the top of the list, the first thing that we need the board's approval for are the special class fees for the 2014-15 academic year.
Move approval of the fees as presented.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Do any of the trustees have questions?
I just appreciated the fact that a lot of this was additional courses or opportunities for our students being offered, and of course, there had to be a fee attached to it, but I think we continue to keep our fees within reason and have them affordable so that the students can, in fact, participate. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. And just as a note, many of the nursing fees had not been increased for the last three years, so that was part of the reason why they were having to do those fees, the use of the simulation lab, and some of the testing that they're required to do of the students.
Excellent.
Can somebody second that motion?
Yes. Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, next, I'd like to invite Dr. Ed Kramer to the podium to just give you a brief explanation of some of the strategies that were, got in place to implement some of the academic pieces of the Chevron Energy Project.
How long, Ed?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I just wanted to kinda touch a little bit on what's going on with the things that we have done with Chevron. What, what we basically have put in place is we are still looking at completing internships with J.E. Dunn and with Chevron. It's possibility for students that are in our business program, that are in the construction programs down at Tech Center, that are in drafting or engineering programs here on campus. They were going to try to do one to two internships at Chevron, and paid internships, and then, I believe, one to two internships paid at J.E. Dunn as well. And at the same time, we had started a conversation, some of the board members were there, on what we were gonna do education-wise in terms of curriculum that could come out of things that were happening with the energy audit and the different changes that were gonna take place as part of the RFQ. And so, with regards to that, we had put that on hold after that meeting last year to, because we were in the midst of hiring Dr. Vitale, and wanted him, his input in that. We were also in the midst of what we were doing with the Dev Math program at the time. So, at this point, what we're, what we're, I want you to know, we're not, we haven't set that aside, it's just that we're trying to work out with, with Bill Sixta and with Brad to try and get things together, to continue on those conversations. I spoke with Brad on it on the phone today. We're looking at the possibility of an externship for a faculty member as well as a possibility so that they could go see some things that they could bring back and try to design our curriculum that way. Because a lot of our curriculum, we can put pieces into classes, which is one thing we're gonna start doing pretty quickly. But in terms of developing a program and/or further classes that students could take, that takes a little bit more because we have to present those through, as you know, through academic policies, Kansas State Board of Regents, so that's what we're working towards. So, that's, that's about where things are at this point.
Ed, what do you have, what, what we have in place for next, for next spring or next fall? Are you gonna be able to have some things in place for then?
I would say the internship will definitely be in place, and I'm hoping that that would be available, opportunity for the summer even.
Okay.
And in terms of pieces that would be able to go into an existing class, I think that's reasonable to say that we could do that. In terms of classes, I don't know, because, to be honest, I'm not 100% sure yet where in those classes it would go. One of the things we talked about was algebra and trying to do some things with our mathematics with a partner, they have Pitsco. Pitsco's main focus is K-12, so while I don't discount it, we're trying to figure out how that, what's going to be the best aspect of that that would, that would go into trying to prepare students to get through their college algebra beforehand. So, those are, that's kind of a question there on that. But in terms of courses that might design out, I think it's gonna have to be thought out by somebody actually going out and, and figuring out whether we need to create a program or elective courses for like, say, a, a problem that you might run into is if you're saying civil engineering students, giving them an elective at the community college is not necessarily something that's going to transfer real well to the four-year school.
Yeah.
But if you're saying a program that, that would provide like a construction angle to that, that would help somebody, say, graduating out of the Tech Center, there might be some value to that, or, or even some things we've toyed with alternative energy-type sources and courses and/or programs along those lines, that, they're doing a lot of that at the Tech and continuing to add right now and getting a lot of success, so whether that could come over into an academic side, something to explore, too.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
And before I do the, kind of the summary on the student performance at Emporia State, I wanted to just kinda highlight some activities of our PTK that occurred over the weekend. They were at the Kansas Regional Convention in Lawrence this last weekend and came away with several awards, and they came down to my office Monday morning all excited, and they were showing me all this wonderful stuff. And I looked at them and I said, "Well, this is great. Can you be at the board meeting tomorrow?" And they looked at me like deer in headlights. And poor Stacy started trying to backpedal, and, and basically, they were exhausted. The students were anxious because they have midterm exams this week, and so they wanted to get some studying done. And Stacy had a meeting with her dissertation advisor this afternoon, so she begged off, but they're gonna be here in April. But just so you know, some of the things that, that they did is they took the top award in the college project, for the college project award, that highlighted their service projects, that some of their service projects. They received a distinguished recognition for what's called the Great Idea Award. This, again, focused on projects that they had done over the past academic year. Distinguished recognition for the Honors in Action Project, which was all of their, some of their bigger projects that they did. The distinguished service award, again, they got a distinguished recognition. They got the five-star chapter award, the five-star competitive edge members to two, Tyler Ross and Ryan Proctor. And the one that I think that the PTK students themselves were most proud about was they nominated and Stacy received the top award for distinguished advisor. And I know that they had worked with me for letters of recommendation, and they were really, really proud to nominate her and even more proud that she won. So, we'll have them here at April's meeting so you can congratulate them in person. All right, now, onto other good news, and that is the, the summary of the report from Emporia State College.
Emporia State, yes.
I love it that they, State University, that they give that. Are you a graduate of Emporia State?
You better believe it.
We've gotta find a good university to give us a report there.
Well, why settle for good when it can be great?
That's right. Well, I can't, I can't say too much about, I have a really good friend that also graduated from Emporia.
Mr. Wayne also over there.
Anyway, you know, there's, our students do really well there, and it's really a pleasure to get that report.
Yes, it is.
I gave you a handout that's kind of summarizes this, but, you know, they led the way with They had, you know, the, they led the way with the mean cumulative GPA for our transfers was higher than either the native ESU undergraduates or for all the community college students. And that 98% of the 101 students that transferred from KC-KCC are in good standing versus 93% and 96% for all community colleges. I think it's just a real reflection of the quality of the education the students are getting here. As they transfer on, they're prepared, and that's in no small part attributed to our faculty here. So, I think it's, this is a great report, and I look forward to seeing it every fall and spring semester.
Great.
That's very good.
All right, so, I believe if you have any questions, I'll be able to ask them on the rest of the report.
Okay, are there other questions about Dr. Vitale's?
Move acceptance of Dr. Vitale's report.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to accept the report. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Vitale. And now, Vice President for Administrative Services, Mr. Bodie.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Before we get into the tuition issue and, and my report, I'd had two more reminders for you, please. If you're a wrestling fan, Metro Wrestling tonight, 6:30 in our fieldhouse, the best of Kansas versus the best of Missouri. And the other thing is, I'm, if you knew or not, there was a fire in the Tech Friday afternoon. A clothes dryer burned up, smoked real heavily, soot had real heavily. Service master has been in there since Friday night. They do have it finally cleaned. Unfortunately, that, all that soot and all that smoke found a way to fall down into the culinary arts area, and you know how many little tiny utensils, cups, saucers, spice jars that are out in all those racks? All of those had to be cleaned individually. They've done a great job. Cliff Smith, Tom Felenhofer, and our campus police pretty much spent the weekend there. Special thanks to all of them for that. It was a long weekend as they got that building back up. Students are back in the classroom, so wanted to pass that on you. First item under mine is a request to increase in-state tuition by $5 for next year. I have placed at your desk a corrected copy of the, of the tuition and fees schedule. We remain below the state average. We remain a truly affordable community college. We have had a history in the past of when we approved in-state, our out-of-state was three times. I got some questions on that. I would answer those, but I would ask your consideration of the increase in tuition for $5 per credit hour.
Move approval.
Begging.
Okay, a motion in a second to approve raising tuition by $5 per credit hour.
And the Finance Committee did review the request, and that's why you actually have a lot of the information that you have received, because we asked that to have been given to the board prior to the meeting so that you could have that information to make your, your decision around.
Okay. Are there other questions?
Yeah, I, I think this is the third year in a row that we've raised tuition on students, and I'm gonna vote for it, but I'm reluctant to vote on a student increase when we haven't even started the budget process yet. I mean, I know there's a timing issue that you have to be able to get the tuition out to, out to the students in time, but it just seems to me like it's a, it's a move before we know what budget issues we're gonna have, how much funding we're gonna have, expenditures and so on. And I, we had the same conversation last year. We had the same conversation last year, and again, it was a timing that we have to notify the students by a certain time of when they, what their tuition is going to be. But I'm just sorry that we have to continue a third year in a row now of increasing our student tuition. And I know we're still below everybody else, but I hope that somewhere in the future we're able to say we don't have to do this again.
Okay. Just to clarify, we're just voting on the intuition $5 increase, right?
And, and 15 outstate, if you will.
Okay. Those of you that made the motion and seconded, you understand that?
Mm-hmm.
We're voting on both.
Yes.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Brian, can I, I just have a question about how our metro rate is going in terms of attracting students?
We've had some success. Of the Missouri students that we have, the vast majority of them are from the metro. I do not, I'd be lying if I told you I thought it had been a critical issue in getting them across the river anywhere except in the Technical Education Center. It has really helped there, because there, there's a lot of colleges that offer general education across the river, but our Tech Center is different, and it has helped there.
Good. Okay, thank you.
All right.
We actually got to weld this week.
Got to weld?
Yeah, used to welding.
You did?
Put on the, yeah.
You?
Dr. Vitale and I went over there, they had a special show and tell, and invited all of us to come over and, and actually do some welding with the machine they want us to purchase for the college.
Oh, I knew there was a hook. Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, so it was fun.
There's method to the madness here.
Are we going to be purchasing that welding machine? Were you officially impressed?
Well, the thing about it is that you can, you can pack it up and take it to the schools and use it for recruiting tool. And so, that was the selling point about it. So, we haven't gotten the request yet, but it will certainly be considered. You just happen to have it with you, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
It's actually a welding simulator. It, it's, the students can practice with the right angle to hold the welding tool and, and do it, I'm probably using the wrong term, Cliff. But, you know, they practice and get it all right, and then they can actually weld with it and get feedback as to how, how well they did holding the welding instrument at the right angle and to the joint.
And I scored higher than he did.
Aye, aye, I don't know. I agree, you did score higher, not did.
And there was one other thing, too. For the actual manufacturing companies, they have, they have some kind of language and, and welding requirement specs that they have, and we can take a disk drive, one of those little disk drives, and take it to their company, get their specs, bring it back, stick it in this machine, and our students are specifically trained for those companies when they graduate. So, I mean, I was really impressed with that.
Smart technology, too.
Yes, absolutely. To better prepare our students for work, yeah.
That's a selling point, Mr. Smith, in case you didn't know.
I see you highlight that in the proposal, yeah.
Well, and I highlighted the laser, the new laser training, which I, that fascinated me. When I saw the laser, it, I don't know why, but that, I just thought that was amazing. So, I think that's, that's going to be a really valuable piece.
My report is on pages 53 to 58. I will answer any questions on the report.
Move acceptance of the vice president's report.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Are there questions for Mr. Bodie about his report? Wendell thinks he might have a question. He's searching. Yeah, that's all right. That's all right? Okay, ready to call a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. I guess we'll step to the next item.
And we're jumping to finance, so you're still up.
Ask for your approval of the bills from page 63 to 137.
Move approval, payment of the bills.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any additional comment, J.D.?
Review by finance, pretty typical.
Yep. Okay, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Paid the bills, all right.
I appreciate that. Ask for your approval of the financial reports from 138 to 141.
So moved. Second.
All right, motion in a second. Do we accept the financial report? Are there requests where you have a question, Wendell?
No, no.
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 All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you. And back on page four, under 11C, recommendations one and two, ask for your approval.
The finance committee did a review and moved for approval.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Director of Human Resources, agenda item 12, Ms. Cheryl.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'd like to present the March 2014 personnel agenda for your review. Items one through five are for just basic information, and then items six through 15 and the addendum dated March 7th, 2004, excuse me, 2014 are submitted for your approval.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to accept these items. Any questions about any of the items for Cheryl? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Right. Agenda item 13, report from committee. Who would like to lead off? All right. I would just add from KACC, Dr. Gibbons talked about being in Topeka the next couple of days. The regents are having a reception that she and I are both planning to attend tomorrow evening, 4:30 to 6:30. And so, I will meet her there, and we're planning to participate in that. Stuff continues to move, you know, through the legislature pretty quickly. I don't want to jinx us, but up to this point, you know, things seem to be going pretty well for us. Now, the caveat is, we'll see what impact again in lawsuit really has.
I was in, Dr. Gibbons told you, I was in Topeka last week, and Thursday we were speaking with the K-BOR staff when the announcement of the, of the Supreme Court decision, not the actual announcement, but just the note that they were going to announce it. And boy, the story changed quickly. And all, all higher education bills are still in committee.
Yes.
They pulled them, anything that had gone to the floor, they pulled back. So, they're all sitting there, because they did not know what the impact of the K-12 was going to be on us. And they, they pretty much said, "Everything we told you three minutes ago may not be true anymore."
Exactly.
But it's, so far, the impact of that, it looks okay for this year.
Yeah, that, that was what the caveat was all about, you know, so we'll, we'll remain optimistic and hopeful, but up to this point, it didn't look like there was much of anything that was really going to hurt us. So, the caveat is, we'll see how that, that actually does impact it, and how things now move out of committee or get stuck in committee or whatever, whatever. So, we're watching, and we're, we're all very much engaged with KACC, Dr. Gibbons, with the presidents, myself, with the executive committee and the trustees, and so, we'll see.
Don, is there any, any updates on, any, any updates on the local election issue, moving the dates? I know there are a couple of different proposals, but I am a little confused as to where they are right now.
They're still in committee.
We had that discussion with Linda Fund. She thinks that bill has legs.
Which, which one of the bills?
The one that moved the local election to, primary to August and the general election to November.
To November.
Of even or odd years?
Ma'am, I don't, I don't know.
Oh, because there are two.
Because the, the real issue was, for all of the business officers, is at least, you know, when the budgets are getting ready to be approved, you know, we get some information in July, we have something in August, we publish, by September, the budgets are approved, the board of trustees are in session, and they're ones that are going to be there. The concern is, that budget process hasn't changed from the state. We're still not going to publish till July and August, and we're not going to get a budget till September. And then what happens if four of your seven board members change?
You've got lame duck situation.
And the first of January, they all vote against everything that you just put in the budget?
Yeah.
And how do you deal with that situation? And that timing compared to how we build budgets according to the very same legislature's laws? We've, we spent a lot of time, she understood all that, but kind of told us that we might just be talking to ourselves.
Speaking of the, oh. Speaking of the budget, I just want to make sure that the trustees are aware that the deans are to have budgets in first of April. I'm sure no coincidence on that date. And then, of course, administration will be looking at that, but toward the end of April, we'll probably be requesting a special, a special board meetings to review, reviewing the budgets and that, so just be kind of cognizant of that for our, our April board meeting, having calendars, having some ideas of some dates of where we can be meeting to review the budget.
Very good. All right. Agenda item 14 is unfinished business, and I'm unaware of any, so I'm sure we're anxious to get to agenda item 15.
Want to wish everybody a good spring break. Go someplace warm.
Move adjournment. Do something.
No tomorrow.
We have a motion to adjourn from trustee Townsend.
Second.
Second trustee Rio. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're on your own. Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you very much, and enjoy your spring break.